Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, August the ninth, two thousand twenty-one. I would like to ask everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Bill Lowe of First Presbyterian Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. I'm pinch hitting for one of our former pastors that was in this community and has moved up to Ohio. So we wish her well. Shayra Knowles is her name, and we'll miss her. She made quite a contribution in her time here in our community as a minister down at assisting with the Missionary Methodist Church. Tonight, I wanted to look just a moment at a writing that the Apostle Paul, sometimes it's, you want to scratch your head. Romans thirteen, verse one, he says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. Sometimes I have to go back to the Bible and look at these things because sometimes my government is doing some stuff that I just really don't like. Like today, I got my Gaston County property tax, and about one-third of my this much salary is just going to go to that, you know, but I know it's going to be put to good use. I believe that and trust in it. But we all have our issues sometimes with the government. Good Lord, I got a lady at my church, she gets so obsessed watching this stuff all day that last week she called and made an appointment. She said, "I just not want, I just don't know what to do." You know, this is happening, that's happening, what going on? We're in such a mess, and the world is falling apart, and, you know, going to hell in a handbasket. I said, "There's something you can do. Number one, turn your TV off. Number two, don't read your emails or get on the computer. Just do that, and your life will be as much." She said, "I gotta know what's going on, though." I said, "Well, go ahead and suffer." Yeah, a lot of things. We gripe sometimes when things don't go our way. And then I read what Paul said here. You know, he was writing to Christians who were living under tyranny. It was against the law to be a Christian in the Roman Empire. You could be put to death for it. And yet Paul appeals to us when he says, "All governments are established, they're allowed to be established, and they are allowed to happen because God is the ultimate rule." So, you know, I might not like right now what the President thinks about global warming or anything else, you know, but I do know that all of the things that we fuss about, our government system, our, gosh, getting ready to start back to school. Should I wear a mask, or should I not wear a mask, you know? CDC, I live with a public health nurse, and say, "You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna carry one of these before I wear it or not. If I see her, I'm gonna slap it on." But these are the things that we know that the Lord is allowing us to do. And we know that the ultimate authority is in Him, and there's a reason. And maybe that reason is not so apparent to us, but ultimately, it is His will that allows. And God bless you, and God lead you and direct you as you continue to govern our fair city of Cheriville. Would you please join me in prayer? Lord, we thank you for your word that calms our nerves, that creates a way in which our anxiety will be overridden by peace, a peace that you promised us beyond all understanding. And Lord, I just pray that tonight, that as our city officials are swinging into action once again, that it would be quite evident that their leadership and their heart rest in wisdom from above and the charity from you alone, our God. Direct our path. Lead us into those ways that are pleasing to you, and may Jesus Christ be praised by the way we live and how we speak. In His name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First item we need to get rid of is the agenda approval, and I would entertain a motion from council.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, there is none. Next item would be approval of our minutes of our City Council Meeting of July the twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. That was pages one through thirteen in your agenda packet on your tablets. I need direction from council on approval of the minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of our City Council Meeting on July twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Next item is mayor's comments. The first information I want to share with our citizens and those that are streaming via the media is the announcement that I will be seeking another two-year term as your mayor on November the second, two thousand twenty-one. At the present, only one other candidate has filed in opposition for this office, and that is our Fire Chief, City Manager Jeff Cash. Now, rumor had surfaced that I had decided not to seek reelection and had told Chief Cash that I would not be seeking this office in November. That statement was true at one time, but I discovered later that I was going to file, and I called Chief Cash at one time and told him four days before the filing, and told him after an examination and lengthy discussion with my cardiologist, I had decided to file for reelection. I just wanted to clear up this rumor and state the true facts of this matter. And certainly, Chief Cash, if you think this was a political statement, I would welcome any rebuttal you have at the end of my comments. There's a lot going on in our city, as many of you may have noticed. Our downtown projects are going well. The sewer contractor Cajun has been hard at work and is currently ahead of schedule. Our waterline contractor has begun installing connecting valves throughout our downtown area. We have been doing our best to keep our merchants informed as to the impact of these projects and have had few complaints concerning these proceedings. We have good news coming from the state that we will receive our first ARP monies very soon in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. That can be utilized for restricted expenditures based on federal protocols. Now, this council here will be prioritizing where these monies will be spent. The city will receive another check next year with the similar amounts. Following President Biden's lifting the moratorium on evictions, we were finally able to clean up the property at nine oh three East Church Street. Boarding up the structure hopefully will deter anyone from trying to enter the property. The neighbors in this area are going to keep an eye on the house and notify our police department if there is any trespassing on this property. On July twenty-second, I gave the welcoming address at the Main Street Kickoff Event held at this community building. All the volunteers were eager and enthusiastic about the coming year and all of the immediate plans for our Main Street program. Congratulations go out to our Dixie Girls Angels for winning the two thousand twenty-one World Series in Moncks Corner, South Carolina. Our city is very proud of this accomplishment. On July the twentieth, Chief Cash and I attended the meeting of the Gaston County Commissioners. Piedmont Lithium Executives gave a presentation on their progress of bringing five hundred jobs to our area in reference to mining for lithium in a large area of our ETJ, which is our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Following the presentation, about thirty or more individuals spoke in opposition of Piedmont Lithium and their plans for expansion and development in this area. On August the sixth, our Gaston County Commissioners put a moratorium of sixty days on future development of mining within our county. On August the fifth, Chief Cash, Brandon Abernathy, and myself met with Gaston County EDC Director Donnie Hicks, his assistant, Richard Randall, and Cherryville's EDC member, Robert Brown, to discuss future economic development for Cherryville and our surrounding community. Director Hicks talked about county waterlines coming to Cherryville and the impact it would have on future economic growth for our city. Discussion of the new Sunbeam Industrial Park to be developed across from Keystone Carbon and Walmart was addressed by Richard Randall, and several of the covenants are still yet to be completed before maturity of this county project. And that ends the mayor's comments. Chief Cash, do you have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal, sir.
Thank you. Next item is citizens to be heard. Any citizen that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium and stating your name and address before you speak. Comments will be held strictly to five minutes per person. And I would like to let any of those that are watching via the media that the number they can call in is seven zero four two one four eleven seventy-two. Again, seven oh four two one four eleven seventy-two, and we will listen to your comments. Chief Cash's wife Cynthia will be watching the phone and will notify us if any one comes in over the phone. So at this time, again, any citizen that would like to be heard, you may do so by coming to the podium and stating your name and address before you speak. Comments will be held to five minutes. Do I have any citizen that would like to be heard? Mr. Strapp?
Wade Strout, two ten South Dixie Street, Cherryville. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but Mayor Bean made a comment about the Piedmont Lithium project that's being debated in our area. And I saw part of that meeting on the livestream they had, and it was, and he just made a comment concerning the meeting with Donnie Hicks. It's very concerning to me when the county talks about bringing water to that project from somewhere, I think, in the Costner School area. And if I'm not mistaken, we have water lines within a mile of that project or that area. So I just, I just hope that the city is on top of not letting the county take over something that we have a full right to serve.
Yes, I will address that.
And I'll just make one other comment about, everybody's talking about the county's approval, the county's approval, the county's approval. If I'm not mistaken, that property is in Cherryville's ETJ. And it's certainly a legal question, but it seems to me that this board has some approval rights inherent with anything that goes into our ETJ. So I just hope that this board, because that's a huge project and something that could potentially benefit or devastate our area for a long time. So I just hope this board and this council and this city is on top of those things. And we, I hope we as a city do not let Gaston County rule the day and dictate our path in this direction. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if you'll stay there, Mr. Strapp, I will address those questions you have and concerns. First of all, that was the intention of the meeting we had with Donnie Hicks and with Richard Randall and with Robert Brown, was to know where Cherryville stood on this and whether they were going to bring the water lines to us. Yes, they're gonna bring the water lines from the county, but Chief, you may want to let me know exactly how they stated this. There will be a similar hookup valve like we have for Lincoln County right now that we paid a million dollars for. We will have a hookup to our waterline and a valve connection, and if Piedmont Lithium comes to fruition, we would be furnishing the water to them from Cherryville. That's number one.
Again, I didn't come here to really get answers to questions. I was merely expressing my concerns, but if that's the case, that's great. But why are they bringing a waterline from Costner School? There's a longer-term goal in that waterline coming from Costner School.
I agree. I agree, and we discussed that. They say the economic growth that will be coming before it gets to Cherryville is their concern also. And right now, they're talking about Apple Creek. You know, they've got one business there, they're bringing another business there. And then right across the road, they have Costner School. And they said it's, they're not going to have enough water pressure to, if they had a fire at Costner School, to be able to furnish enough pressure for that. So they're going to put that line in anyway for that reason. But then their idea was to bring it on, and they're saying that any economic growth from Costner School coming this way, they would be able to tap on and service water for that. In return, they're letting us, if Piedmont Lithium comes to fruition, then we would get that. Second thing you brought up was very good was about political, it's in our ETJ, not necessarily Gaston County's. Cherryville has the largest ETJ in the county. And that's because we're up here in the northwest counter, northwest end of the county. So yes, it is in our ETJ, but I called our city attorney and asked the very same question. If it's in our ETJ, why can't we permit or not permit them? And he said, "It's sort of like a building. If you wanted to put an outbuilding in your backyard, you do get a permit from the city, but you also have to get one from the county." So the county would have input into it eventually anyway. The one thing, though, that we haven't considered, if the county does not permit, they're probably going to go to the state. And the state, if the state permits them, they'll be a lot more lenient than the county would. So they still have other options, too. And, you know, Cherryville has been sort of negative, or not neg, I'm sorry, don't put that down, not negative, but we've just not made a decision whether we're supporting it or not supporting it at this time. Our main objective is to see if Piedmont Lithium comes, what does Cherryville get from it?
Well, and that's my concern. You know, the state can do what they want to, and it's my understanding the state could override anything that may be decided on the county or city level.
That's true.
This thing's going to impact Cherryville. It's not going to impact Belmont. It's not going to impact Mount Holly. It's not going to impact Raleigh. It's going to impact Cherryville. So I just hope we're on top of all of these decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Strapp. Any other citizen that would like to be heard at this time? Come to the podium, state your name and address.
I'm Michael Fess, Brookway Drive, Huntersville, North Carolina. Wasn't planning on speaking tonight either, but I just wanted to get up and show our support for the tax amendment, for the zoning tax amendment you're considering right now. I've been working with my partners, he as well as Denise with True Homes with Derek, to draft this as well as a planning commission. So just want to see what a benefit this will bring to Cherryville and to be able to give the city flexible options on housing and price points. It creates quality and sustainable neighborhoods while saving some of the natural features of the land, such as the streams and some of the wetlands and ponds by providing those buffers by clustering the lots. So, and I also wanted to stand up, see if anyone had any questions regarding that or comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Which property are you talking about?
The Stroop Acres property.
You plan to do a commercial in the front part of that?
A small portion. Right now, we're looking at commercial, just that front highway, one fifty. It naturally leads itself to be a commercial.
And the comment I would make is I, and this is rumor, too, I haven't heard it from you or any of your executives or anything, but I've heard that you're going to ask for annexation to the city.
That's correct. That's correct. Yep. So the water and sewer, we'd ask to donate that for maintenance, so we'd construct it all connections, have it inspected, and donate the infrastructure to the city.
Wow.
That was my, that was my.
That's, that's great.
With Denise, she came and talked to me about it, and I told her our concern was what the cost was going to be, maybe long-term or whatever, for the city. And she informed me that y'all were going to like to absorb the cost, reverse the city for the cost.
All the costs would be borne on the developer for the water in the sewer. So the installation of all the pipes, pump station, I believe we have to build there, the connection of the pump station to the existing infrastructure, same thing with the waterline, bringing the water to the property, any easements we need to get will all be borne by the developer.
Okay. My concern would have been for this council, I would have suggested that we do a cost analysis to see if it did truly benefit the city before we made any vote on the annexation or so forth. But that sounds good. It sounds like a good plan for the city. So appreciate your comments.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're going to move on to item eight, and that is special recognition of employees' years of service. And is John Mark Rudisal, is he here? There he is. If you'll come forward. I love to do these things here. My pet peeve is doing certificates. This certificate is awarded to John Mark Rudisal in recognition of thirty years of service to the city of Cherryville. It's signed by our city manager, Jeff Cash, and our mayor, H.L. Dean. Congratulations. It's a lot of years, thirty years.
It's been honoring and privilege and service of the chair. I had hair when I started.
I did, too, John Mark. I remember when you had hair.
Oh, you're quite welcome. We appreciate your service, for sure. Okay. Is Chris King, is he with us?
He's not here, Mayor.
He's not here. Okay. I will just read the certificate for Chris King. This certificate is awarded to Chris King in recognition of twenty years of service to the city of Cherryville, signed by City Manager Jeff Cash and Mayor H.L. Dean. So we'll make sure he gets that. It's already framed for him, and we'll make sure that he gets that. And our next item is special recognition of Captain Nathan Bowman of the Western North Carolina Association of Firefighters, and he has been awarded the Fire Officer of the Year Award. And our Mooresville Deputy Fire Chief Shane LaCount is here to present that to Nathan.
Mayor, neither one of them are here due to illness, so we're going to ask you to postpone it.
Okay. We can certainly put it on next month's agenda. I think September thirteenth. Is that correct for our next? Well, we can do it work session if we need to. Okay. Thirteen. Okay. The next item is a public hearing in reference to, I might ask Cynthia Cash, has anyone called in yet? No one's called in yet. Okay, a public hearing. This is in reference to a conditional use permit for fourteen forty-four West Academy Street, and that's GIS partial ID number one three zero three two zero two one nine zero six six, parcel one three zero three one four, parcel one three zero three one eight. We have our planning and zoning director, Derek Mackey. We would ask now that someone make a motion that we go into public hearing?
Make a motion, go into public hearing.
Have a motion in a second by council to go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, Derek, you have that, and that's page seventeen through twenty-nine on your tablets. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Dennis Blackburn, who's here today from Wudo Cooper Company. He's out of Savannah, Georgia. On July, on June twenty-first, he submitted a conditional use permit to the board, and they voted unanimously to pass to recommend that you did give him the special use permit.
Okay. Do I have any citizen that would like to speak regarding the public hearing for this permit? Any comments by any citizen in reference to the conditional use permit? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to go out of public hearing?
Make a motion, go out of public hearing.
Have a motion in second to go out of public hearing. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, we'll now go to, I think it's page twenty-nine, if we can scan down there, and that is the findings of facts. For the conditional use permit, property location, as we said, is fourteen forty-four West Academy Street, and the use is for public housing. And number one, the finding of facts. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. Yes or no?
Yes.
Everyone agree with yes?
Yes.
Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Yes or no?
Yes.
All agree that it is yes. And three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property unless the use is a public necessity. Yes or no?
Yes.
Again, did I have, yes, okay. And four, the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with the Cherryville Land Development, Development Plan. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
After having held a public hearing on August the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and in light of the finding of council, conditional use permit has been approved by this city council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Okay.
Mayor, can you back that up a second and get a motion from a council member to approve the conditional use permit?
Make a motion that we do approve the conditional use permit.
A second.
Okay, have a motion in a second that we do approve the conditional use permit. And at this time, I would ask for the vote again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Thank you, council. Okay, we'll go to item eleven. It's consideration to set a date for a public hearing in regards to rezoning one fourteen Cone Street, GIS parcel number one two nine four four eight. And for those that wonder where this is, it's right behind Medical Center Pharmacy. It used to be the Davis Brown Company that did bookkeeping. If we set a date for this, we would still have time to do this on September thirteenth. If you wanna set it for that date. Does any council member have any problems with considering to set that date for a public hearing?
Sounds good.
Okay.
We have to vote.
Would I entertain a motion that we do set that for September thirteenth?
Make a motion, we set that date for a public hearing on September thirteenth to look at the property on one fourteen Cone Street.
Second.
All right, have a motion in two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Next is consideration to set a public hearing date in reference to zoning ordinance text amendment. And Derek, that's on page thirty-five through thirty-eight on your tablets.
Yes, that's Michael Falls, the Montrose Group out of Huntersville, North Carolina. He presented this text amendment on page thirty-five through thirty-eight. He went forward to zoning board, Board of Adjustment. They voted unanimously to pass it also.
Okay. And I think we've had comments already on this. Do you have anything else you would like to, anyone to say in regards to this public hearing?
Sure. Thanks, Derek. Just wanna state, the petitioner, the, the home builder is gonna be True Homes. They're out of Monroe, North Carolina. They were actually founded here in North Carolina in two thousand seven. So their mission statement's to provide people for the opportunity for more life. So that includes associates, their clients, their, their trades, trade partners. So, and then their mission is to be uniquely exceptional in how they relate with their clients, their associates, their trade partners. Their culture is just incredible. I was actually an employee there for five years. So I worked with Denise. Denise is a Cherryville resident, lives here, I think, all her life. So she's been with True Homes for a long time as well. So I can't speak enough highly about True Homes, and they've been developing a building in the Carolinas now, like I said, since two thousand seven. And they're doing, they do incredible communities. If you ever have a chance to see any. And I can provide photos as well of some of these cluster developments that we've developed in the past. And one up in Stanley is one of the more recent ones, has been really successful. So, and again, these are, they're market rate homes. So, and it, it provides, you know, very quality neighborhood, great community, public space. By being able to cluster the developments, you're saving a lot of the natural areas within the land. So we're not increasing the density under the base zoning. So it's still the same on a lot, but by providing a smaller lot, one, there's less infrastructure to maintain, you know, less miles of pipe underground that could, that could need to be repaired. There's more natural open space, more community space, more parks and recreation land on it. That can be, it, that benefits everybody. So, again, you know, this text amendment, it still leaves a lot of the control and decision-making with both the planning and zoning board, as well as the county commissioners. It'll be a conditional use permit, just as stated. So you still gotta review plans. You'll review all the conditions within the rezoning. It just allows that clustering of the lots without actually increasing the density.
Okay. Does any council member have any questions? Okay. If not, do you want to entertain a motion that we set this public hearing for September the thirteenth? For this text amendment?
Yeah, make a motion to set the public hearing for September thirteenth.
Second. Okay, have a motion in a second to set the consideration of the public hearing in regards to this zoning ordinance text amendment on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Thank you.
You said you can provide us some photos. I'd love to see what it's going to look like or what the plan is.
I can show you some representative communities that we've done in the past. Y'all email them to Derek.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number thirteen, and this is consideration of appointment to the cemetery committee. And council member liaison Jill Puet will walk us through this. That's on page thirty-nine of your tablet.
Okay. When I, with approach from the city clerk, we were advised that we were going to have two vacancies. And that was of Bob Fairs and Bob Gilreid, both, that they just felt like, you know, due to health reasons and other things going on, that they could no longer, felt like they should be on the board. I have approached Mr. Bill Cruz and Mrs. Linda Hudson, who both have expressed the desire that they would like to serve on this committee and said they would, they would be willing to do this.
Okay. Who, what were those names? Billy Cruz?
Billy Cruz, Mr. Bill Cruz, and Linda Hudson. Linda, for one, is in that cemetery every day. So she's pretty much familiar with anything and how it looks, and I think she would, wouldn't mind offering the input.
Is that Ms. Hudson that lives on Mulberry?
She lives, yes.
Okay. Does, any council members have any questions about these two that would like to serve on our cemetery committee? That's Billy Cruz and Linda Hudson. If not, do I entertain a motion that we accept these two new members to the cemetery board appointment?
Make a motion to accept both of them to the cemetery committee.
Have a motion in second to accept the two names presented as appointments to the cemetery committee. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none. Next item, item fourteen is an update on our COVID policy slash restrictions. And our city manager, Fire Chief Jeff Cash, will lead us through that. I think you had a meeting today on this.
Yes, sir. This morning, the department heads got together, and with the D variant to the COVID nineteen virus, all the municipalities and counties are gearing up for what could take place. And our original policy that was based on the CDC guidance and the governor's directions and protocol has somewhat changed, and we have modified that. The counts, I mean, the city department heads this morning put this together, had a lot of thought put on it, and it's now for your review and presentation and possibly adopt at the work session. I know you typically don't like to adopt policy at the work session, and it could possibly wait till September. It depends on where we are with the COVID nineteen at the time. But this changes especially. The city's been gracious to a lot of our employees and allowed to have that time off for COVID if they experienced it or if a family member experienced it. So we're going to change that slightly. And now, if, starting January first, up to eighty hours we'll allow for COVID. Anything after that, they would have to pay with their vacation, comp time, or sick time, preferably sick time. And that's the biggest change, and it also adds some incentives. You've probably read in the paper that a lot of cities and counties, our county for one, is going to a hundred dollar contribution to any citizen that gets a COVID nineteen virus shot. We would like to do that with the city employees, 'cause we only have about thirty that are vaccinated, maybe twenty-eight or twenty-nine. And it hurts our workforce when people are out with COVID, and we have several out right now. So we would like to offer us an incentive of three days off. We do not have the money in the budget to do the cash awards, but we felt like the department heads could manage the time off. And there's an incentive for those who've already received it, and then an incentive for those to take it who have not received the vaccination. We did not wanna make it mandatory, of course. Still make it optional. And that's for your pleasure to peruse, make changes, suggest anything you want changed, and we'll take care of that either at the work session, if time deems critical for COVID, or at the September meeting. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
The only question I would have, it says, they shall then receive their twenty-four hours of time off. But that's not just a day off, that's three workdays of eight hours off.
For eight hours, for eight-hour shift people, it'd be three days. For fire and police, it would be a shift.
Okay. Does council wanna bring this up at our work session, which would be, actually, that would be August thirty-first. Last day of August.
I think we should look it over before we do anything.
Okay. That's, somebody's done a lot of work on this, so that's good to present this information. It's very thorough. And.
Mayor, the department heads put their heads together, and Brittany helped put the document together.
Okay, that's a good job. Okay, we will take it up then, August thirty-first, at the next work session. Okay. Now, our next item is other business. At this time, we're open for other business. I've got some in here I gotta find. Again, Cynthia, have we had any?
No calls.
No calls? Okay. I think most of mine, I've, I've already talked to Dixie about one, something about a check that didn't go through, but it's not our fault. It did go through, as far as we know. Someone had mentioned to me about the flower beds had a lot of weeds in them. And I talked to Ned Yates this morning. He actually was in front of city hall when I arrived, about seven-thirty. And he said that was on his agenda to start getting the weeds out of the flowers. So that one's been taken care of. One thing I wanna bring up is this, to see if there's a possibility we could get some blinds for this, because we just taped up trash bags.
We, we have looked at blinds and are talking about window tinning for that window, you know, like on a car.
Right.
Just to put the thick tinning, and our fire staff can do that.
Okay.
Or install the blinds if it, if the blinds are a better work.
Okay, and I, I was uptown early this morning, and I noticed that at the museum, those big columns that are up there, the one closest back toward the barber shop, toward Mike Neal's, a piece is missing off the end of that. Did it fall off, or did we intentionally take it off to repair it? Or is something gonna be done for that?
Mayor, it's actually laying on the roof of the building beside it.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we can attach that back, or?
It, it actually busted in the piece that's gonna heal.
Oh, okay.
That's why we haven't really messed with it. And I'm scared if we go to mess with it, we're gonna cause more damage. It needs to be a perfection.
Okay.
Those blocks are bigger than you think. So it's gonna take something, you know, pretty heavy up there to move that stuff around. And I'm scared that the column, it will compromise the column if we go to mess with it.
Okay. And we certainly have to keep it within the consideration that it is the old building.
Yes, sir. And it is on our list. People have, several people have looked at it, but it's in renovations for the building.
Okay, that's the first time I had noticed it, and I guess it's 'cause all the pigeons were on it. And I looked up there and saw that. The only other thing is, and I'm not sure I talked to Brandon about this, but we have a problem with some bees that this to drive in the drain. And he said he didn't wanna put gas or kerosene or anything like that, because it goes into our drain. And so he had called, and he said Jason Black came down there and looked at it and said, we'll be back. We need to do this at night. But still, the problem's there, and it's right at the, my son-in-law and daughter's mailbox. So they're scared to death they're gonna get stung. And actually, my granddaughter pulled in there Sunday and pulled right over it, not knowing it was there. And we looked out, and they had covered her windshield, the bees had. She said, I can't get to my car. And I said, just go fast. Open the door fast and jump in. But I don't know, how do we treat something that's going into our system?
Yep, Mayor, we have to be real careful about what chemical we use there. There's another place down here on Ballard Street that's got the same problem. They filled in the brick in the mouth of the catch basin. We've ordered some stuff. As soon as it comes in, we can spray it from forty feet away, but we have to do it right at dusk or at dawn.
Okay.
What we have ordered, it, it shouldn't be coming in any day.
And Mayor, it's, it's non-hazardous to the environment.
Oh, great, then. And you do it at dusk, because that's when most, the bees shouldn't be back there?
Yes, sir. They're not swarming.
They're not swarming, okay. All right, that's, that's all I have. Is any other?
Last time we talked about those, those trees on Academy Street, and I call them danger trees. Y'all were gonna investigate it, maybe talk to an arborist, can you report on that?
Yes, we had an arborist look at it and a tree specialist, and he advises that the trees were still viable, correct? Brandon, help me with, with that, that the trees were still viable and functional, that they might could use some trimming, but that they were healthy enough and wasn't concerned with taking them down.
So he says there's not any danger of them falling across the street or on some car or somebody's house?
I guess anything would happen, but he said, quote-unquote, "The trees were in healthy shape."
I know at this location, we've already had two trees to fall, but you could tell they were diseased or?
The one in the front yard of that same property, it was rotten in the middle.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The one I was worried about, you know, had transformer right in the direction it was leaning, and also Mike Gallagher's house. It's got two rotten places towards the base of it, and they're not going in deep enough to cause a problem.
And as we've talked about it, that's the responsibility of the property owner, it's been determined.
So evidently, it's got strong roots. It's keeping it.
I said I'd tell you, I told you so.
When it goes. Okay, any other comments or under other business by council? Any council member, city staff?
Yep, Mayor, got one more. We've talked about the COVID, Cynthia's gonna hand out. Great news. I told you we was expecting the ARP monies. Dixie advised me that it was deposited in our bank account Friday afternoon.
And we already got it.
We already got it. So here is the list that we talked about at the, one of our planning sessions. And department heads got together and tried to prioritize them. You'll see the ones in blue are our bond projects, because at the time, the bond had not been passed. So we put them on there. But they have been, will be funded through the bond proceeds. And the remaining of the list is things that we would like to do. Of course, it won't cover it all. But this time next year, we'll expect the same amount type of check from the federal government via the state of North Carolina. So we will need, and we don't have to spend the money right now, but we do need to begin to get a plan together. It is federal guidelines. It is federal guidelines. And I've said on many, many webinars and Zoom calls, we can't use it to supplement any pension and we can't use it to put in fund balance. Those are the two biggies that we cannot do. Pretty much, pretty much everything else is open to approval by the federal government.
Do we have to spend this money by January before the next check comes?
It would be the following year, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, okay. I noticed that we've got the Ballard pump station on here.
Yes.
Aren't we having trouble with the Hefner?
We're having trouble with both of them, mayor. The, the outfall that goes to Todd Dover's is the one that we have released. Brandon, help me with the engineering firm. Wooton Engineering, they have been turned loose to apply for a grant. As you know, when the, we got the federal stimulus for American, the rescue project, the state got millions and millions of dollars too. So they're going to pump that money into water and sewer infrastructure. Maybe even us get more power bill money for the streets. That has not been determined yet. But we're going to apply for that water infrastructure and maybe use cash on hand or some of the A R P money to pay the difference. Remember, a portion of that outfall, which is in bad shape, is in Cleveland County. The grant will not pay for the portion that's in the edge of Cleveland County. That's something we would have to undertake as cost of our own. But it is in such bad shape, we've got to address it and address it soon.
So Brandon, is that bridge that goes in there, is that where you're saying part of it's in Cleveland County?
Yes, sir, mayor, that line actually crosses Cleveland County line.
Can we not go more to the left and keep it in Gaston County if we put a new one in?
No, sir, even the discharge bomb's in Cleveland County. So according to what Wooton's telling us, that if we do qualify for those grant funds, that it'll only cover us in Gaston County. And we would have to fund the Cleveland County part, which comes up cheap to about a third, I think.
Yeah, a third of the total project cost. And we could, we could use A R P funds to cover that and any other cost. It's y'all's decision. And water and sewer are the highest priority in anything COVID-related for these A R P monies.
And so we've got an S, we got an estimate on the Hefner of a hundred thousand? Or is that a ballpark figure?
No, no. It's, it's, it's probably one point one or one point two million.
It was actually pushing about nine hundred and fifty thousand.
But if we could get the grant, two thirds of that would be covered by state water quality.
That one's been a problem for some time.
The line, and Brandon can back, support this with more comment and more educated details. But the dying operation over there on that side of town took its toll on our infrastructure over the years. And it's in bad shape now because of those dying operations.
And remember, that pump station catches the whole southwest side of town. So the river's in the southwest, it all goes to that pump station.
Mayor, we do have some bridge question. And Larry Wright is working on solutions and cost factors for the bridge. It's just taking time.
Yeah. So if we, if and when we do get it fixed, we don't have any dying and finishing over there? And that was Sweet Tree, was that Sweet Tree?
Sweet Tree and Travis Ness.
Travis Ness. So we don't have any of that, once we get it fixed, it should be there for a long time?
That's correct, yes.
So we could get a grant to cover two thirds of it?
Yes. And we will know that about October or November.
Or more, maybe six hundred thousand.
Is this prioritized the way staff is thinking?
That's staff's, that's the priority from staff.
Okay.
You say it's supposed to go towards water and sewer?
That's a priority, but it can pretty much go, Mr. Freeman, about anything y'all want it to go to that don't affect pensions and you can't put it in fund balance, you can't save it.
I think while we're doing all this work on water and sewer, we ought to go ahead and address it if we can.
That's our goal and pray for that grant. Last time, we missed it by just a couple points. So hopefully.
When will we know on the grant?
Probably October, November. And that's the fall cycle, there's another cycle in the spring. But I'm hoping that we get it in the fall and we don't have to worry about it.
So some of those changes we've made have.
Some of the changes we've made, and the pot has got much larger.
Okay.
So I see Westgate Park is on here. We have to keep that apart, correct? Is there a deadline on when we got to do something with it?
No, it does not have to, don't have a deadline, but it does has to stay apart.
I didn't know if we were going to be pressured to do something.
Not at this time, but we do need to, it's why you see it on the list.
That's just a ballpark too, right?
That's just a ballpark, probably low ballpark.
So my suggestion would be that all the council members look this over closely and maybe at our August thirty-first work session, we could sort of prioritize some of these projects where we think they should go.
And there may be some that we did not think about.
Okay, that could be added.
Come to that meeting with your list prioritized and then we'll, we'll discuss that.
And there's, there's very, very high possibility that power bill, and I know y'all interested in street resurfing, that our power bill allotment's going to be increased too from this American rescue project.
Okay. Do you want to prioritize as far as what the city thinks is the most needed and then presented to us at work session? Or you want them to?
This is it. So that's their number one?
We've already did that, mayor.
Oh, so this, oh, okay.
So the blue ones are done, so the black rock would be the number one going down.
And Black Rock, we're kind of under, over the barrel on Black Rock. It's got to be expedient.
Okay.
And we're going to get some of that money back then from that, yeah.
And that one is water and sewer lines, right?
Just water.
It's just water, okay.
And we did, we did apply, or we talked to Senator Burr about the police department repairs. But we didn't get anything out of that?
Well, it's still in the works because the budget has not been finalized at the federal. Remember, theirs is October to October. And then we've also, Senator Harrington has put us some money in the budget that's still in there right now. And Representative Hastings has put us some money in the budget. But we couldn't hardly count those chickens because they're not in, they're not in the roost.
I think Westgate Park's part of one of those.
We used to do the A B C money that way. We'd just wait on it till we got it. But now I think we actually budget that, don't we, Dixie?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll address this. Do you want to do this at workstation on the thirty-first? Set suit everybody's suit.
Look at it.
Look at it, okay.
Everybody have their own priorities.
Okay. All right, sounds good then. Okay. Next item on our list and is consideration to enter into closed session. Chief, do we have anyone?
We don't have our guest here, mayor. They must be in the other room.
Okay. All right, I, I will need a motion to consider to go into closed session in regards to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, four, parentheses, four. This is to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreements on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations or to discuss matters relating to military installation, closure, or realignment. Any action approving the signing of an economic development contract or commitment or the action authorizing the payment of economic development expenditures shall be taken in an open session. So if there is anything decided in this closed session, it will come back to the open session.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, go into closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, there is none. We'll be in closed.